...for the Sixth Ward City Council. My name is Todd Melby, and I was asked by the organizer Denise Rulo to moderate today's candid forum. So, thanks for coming. Just a few words about me, just to let you know that I'm not affiliated with any campaign. I haven't donated money to any of the candidates. I don't have any lawn signs in my yard. I work as a journalist, so I consider myself neutral and impartial. The questions today came from the e-democracy forum and other online forums, and also from people who are in the audience today. So if you have a question and you'd like me to ask it of the candidates, you can put your question on a piece of paper back in the box in the back of the room, and we'll see if we can get through it. Also with the format today, each candidate's going to have two minutes to answer each question, and then if one of the candidates criticizes another candidate, then that candidate will have 30 seconds to respond. And we're going to start with opening statements of two minutes each, and we had a pick of numbers to see who would go first, and the incumbent, Abdi Worsami, got number one, so he's going to begin. So go ahead and start.
Thank you very much. My name is Councilmember Abdul Worsami, and I represent the Sixth Ward, and I'd like to thank Diane and everybody who organized this forum, even though it was very quick. So, thank you very much for putting this together. And, no, I can actually stand up. My name is Abdul Worsami. I'm the current Minneapolis City Council member, and I'm running for reelection, and throughout this election, you know, we've garnered a great deal of support. I am the DFL endorsed candidate. I have all the labor union endorsements, including the nurses, which I'm very proud of, my mother was a nurse, and firefighters, as well as the endorsement of Congressman Keith Ellison, and Governor Mark Dayton, and the Star Tribune editorial. I am a progressive. I'm somebody who grew up as a child refugee in London, England, and my worldview point was basically created from that upbringing, you know? As a child of a single mother, raised, who raised six kids, you know, I understand the importance of having safety nets. I understand the importance of having a single payer health care, because I grew up with the NHS. I understand the importance of making sure that we protect the most vulnerable members of our society, and over the last four years, I have done that. I have worked to make sure that we take care of our autistic children in the city of Minneapolis, make sure that we take care of our disabled, make sure that we take care of people that live in public housing. And we've also funded our parks, funded our streets, took care of the bread and butter when it comes to what the city does. I'm very proud of the work that I've done. One of the most things that I'm proud of is the $15 minimum wage that we passed, and I was co-author of that, the safe and sick time that we passed, and I was also a co-author of that, as well as environmental issues such as plastic bags. And the reason why I'm running again, and why I think I am the strongest candidate in this race, is the experience I've had over the last four years. I would love to have your support. Thank you very much for hosting us, and I would love to answer your questions.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Norr.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for taking this time. I'd like to appreciate Denise and the group that organized. This was an impromptu request, and I'm glad that we're doing that. This is what our democracy is about, by the neighbors coming together, talking to the candidates, so you can know the difference. I'm running because Ward Six needs a progressive leader who will represent all the residents, no matter which part of the ward you come from. And I've been listening to the residents from Phillips, Cedar Riverside, went to Stevens Square, went to each and every neighborhood. I've listened to them. They've talked about affordable housing. They've talked about education. They've talked about youth development, safe communities, living wedges, and police accountability. Those are not my issues. Those are the issues that the residents of Ward Six have talked to me about. I've seen several incidents of accidents that have just happened in the last 10 days, one on the 26th and Franklin, the other one on the Moon. I've seen cyclists who have been hit. I've seen young people who have overdosed on a new drug that have learned what it is and impacting our youth, they're using K2. I've seen someone who's actually on the ground that I had to call 911 to get the ambulance to come and pick them up. I've seen people who are homeless that just walked by in this weather, they are sitting outside. The residents of Ward Six are looking for a progressive leader who believes in the change and the things that they do. I walked in as a school board member in the next building in Seward Montessori. There was almost 900 and some students with a capacity of less than 700. I had to fight for an expansion of the school. Seward Montessori never had a high five, meaning the preschool, but that they do right now, and it's because of the work that I did on the school.
All right, thank you very much. So we've heard from both candidates, and now we'll go to your questions. Let's begin with a question about our neighborhood and about our ward. What are your ideas for bringing different sub-communities? And I think by this, the questioner means people of different backgrounds in our ward together. So how would you most bring people together? We'll begin with you.
You know, what I've promised throughout this process is, I'm going to listen to you. I'll be there with all the neighborhoods. I've served in two neighborhood organizations. I understand the impact of connecting the neighborhood to the city. I'm not going to neglect any neighborhood. I'm going to attend as much as many meetings, including the one which is coming up on the 8th. If I become your next city council member, I'll be here on November 8th to talk about a vision that we can all develop for this ward, starting with this neighborhood. We know we have got so many challenges, we need to bridge the gap. I've worked with many people from different backgrounds, different areas. I've been a public servant for the past 18 years. Bringing people is part of my job. Crossing that bridge and helping each other to understand as I work for the community is something which I value. I want to work with all of you so that we can address the issues that impact all of us every day. That cannot happen if I'm going to be sitting at the city hall, making solutions or finding solutions to the issues that we've never discussed about. I promise you that I'm going to connect with you. I will bridge the gap of many communities, diverse communities, that who live here. That is what I have promised, and I will keep my promise.
That's Abdi Worsami.
Well, that question is a very important question, and I think it's one of the single the most important questions in this election. And you have to have the background to bring people together. While I am a Somali, I am a Westerner as well. I was a child refugee, seven years old, my family moved to London, England, which is the epicenter of the Western Anglo-Saxon civilization. And I grew up in one of the largest cities in the world with very diversities. I had friends from, you know, friends from, who were black, who were white. I had friends who were Turkish, who were Greek, who were Welsh. I, you know, from a young age, I understood what it meant to have diversity, and that's why I was able, and I'm able, and I can bring people together. I am a Westerner, you thought. My favorite album is The Verve. You know, I watch Shakespeare plays. I understand the Western culture, and I understand the biases the Western culture has of the East African culture, of the Muslim culture. And I am a bridge between those two cultures, and we've done a great deal of work over the last four years. We've done a great deal of work in bringing people together. We've talked about issues of Islamophobia before Donald Trump was President of the United States. I went to churches, I went to forums in Stevens Square, in Ventura Village, talking about the Muslim experience, the black experience. I'm a Muslim man who happens to be black, an African who's a European immigrant to America. All of those diverse, contradictory, historical, cultural issues makes me the best candidate in this race, you know? I understand Scandinavians. My brother is married to a Scandinavian, and has children who were born in Stockholm. This is the person that I am, and this is the worldview point that gives me courage that I can bring and continue to bring people together. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question has to do with housing, and Councilmember Worsami will be answering this first. Seward has a large amount of subsidized and affordable housing. The neighborhood has continued to support these developments, but there has not been a housing development that includes market rate units built in Seward or any place in the Sixth Ward for over 40 years. What would you do as a council member to help get more market rate housing built in Seward and the whole Sixth Ward?
You know, I think that's a very important point, and I think I give it to Sheldon and to Seward Redesign, who've come to our office many times, wanting to bring 100% market rate housing in this neighborhood. And I think mixed income is important, because we do not want to create areas of concentrated poverty. We don't want to create areas that are, you know, just one income. I think having mixed income, having market rate income in Seward would help our schools, would help, you know, turn around our neighborhoods and not become food deserts. So I encourage, and we were working on it, we had some stumbling, some issues with bureaucracy, but I think we are on the path to work on that and to get that phase three of that development in Seward. But I'm also very proud of the investment that we made in public housing in the time that I've been in council. You know those two towers, the huge towers, Seward East and Seward West. In my time, the city of Minneapolis put $50 million at my direction to keep those 660-unit houses affordable, and I'm very proud of that. So a lot of people talk about affordable housing and what they would do, but I'm talking about what I have done already, championing, making sure that those houses stay affordable for the next 30 years, and those people that live there can stay there for the next foreseeable future. So that's one point that we've done. But I agree, we do need more mixed income housing in Ward Six, because we do not want to create an island of poverty, or an area where there's a lot of concentration of poverty. And we've taken our burden in Ward Six. We have a large concentration, not just of public housing, but also treatment centers in our ward that cause a lot of the public safety issues around Chicago and Franklin. And one of the meetings that I had, the first meeting I had, was with Inspector Sullivan, talking about Chicago and Franklin, and the underlying problem has been all these treatment centers that are concentrated. And I told my colleagues, please share the burden with Ward Six, because we should not have all of these concentrated services just in one particular ward, and our constituents should not take the burden.
All right, thank you. Mr. Norr.
It's a great question. Let's look at Ward Six in general. 85% of the residents in Ward Six are renters. You know, many people live in poverty. They can't afford to pay rent. I spoke with Charles, who lives in this ward. His income is $1,100. He's got a limited fixed income. Guess what? He started working and making at least $200. His subsidy was gone, wiped out, and the public housing that was helping him told him that he can only have one review each year. He will be kicked out from his home, because there are no good options out there. If we want to make a difference, we're going to start building housing for those who can afford and live in those neighborhoods. Mixed income starts with mixed, diverse communities. Those who need the most have been left out. I know, in the same building that I live in, Cedar Riverside, three bedrooms will now cost me $2,300. I can buy two homes if I can afford them. Market rate by people taking subsidy, and then after that, leaving people out in the dark, it's happening. If you don't know, you can look around. The city has invested a lot of money in giving people tax credit, TIF money. And guess what? After 15 years, 30 years, once we're done, that building that the city paid for is going to be market rate, and those who are low-income people will be kicked out. Trust me, I've seen. We're dealing with a major crisis in Stevens Square. Right now, with the revocation of the license from the landlord, we don't know what will happen. It's happening. We have to be cognizant of how to bring mixed income housing in all over the place, and this starts with helping those who need it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Todd, I want to make sure that people in the room have their questions answered.
Sure.
So if you have an ask or question, hang on to it.
So let's talk about the Minneapolis Police Department. There's been lots of talk about reforming the police department. Should the next mayor of Minneapolis keep the current police chief or find an outsider to run the department? Mr. Norr.
It's a good question. Chief Rondo, Armando, I've known him. In fact, he recruited me to be part of a panel that the city was funded by the federal government to talk about police accountability. Should the mayor give him a chance to reform? I think she should. If the next mayor will be he or she, then they should give him that opportunity to continue what he has started. We don't want to be in a cycle whereby we keep on changing the chief without finding the right solutions. And guess what? The solutions are not going to be happening at the city hall. It's going to be happening in this type of conversation, engaging the residents, collaboration, partnership, and making sure that we address the culture of the police, and making sure that we hold the police union accountable. We cannot be embedded with the police union and expecting a change. It has to become a collaborative, a message that comes from you and I and the chief is what will determine how he governs. He believes in 21st century policing, where he addresses the implicit biases, where he addresses changing the culture of the police, where he addresses how to change the training for the police. So they look like the people too, those police who are going to be serving us. Those are things that I value, and those are things many people have talked to me about. How do we reduce the police brutality? Do we need self-insurance for the police officers, so that they can change their culture and forces them to look beyond just, you know, being a police with secure job positions? What I believe in is he should be given the chance and the opportunity to show what he can do, and from there on, we should be part of the conversation of what will happen beyond that.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Worsami?
I mean, I agree with a lot of the points Muhammad Muhammed just said, in terms of the reforms that we need for the police. Yes, louder. I believe in a lot of the things that Muhammad Muhammed just said. I agree with him in terms of the changes that we need to make. In terms of who the next police chief is, that would be a decision that you make, who the next mayor will be, and they will decide. Rondo has until January 2019, he has, you know, ways to go, and I believe in his abilities. I think he's a great chief, and he will make, you know, if he stays on, he'll be a wonderful chief. He's worked with us since he was the first precinct inspector. And there's one thing that I would like to say. You know, on my term in the council, I took $100,000 from an account that the police had, a leisure account that they spent, took $100,000 from that account, and gave it to the neighborhoods of Ventura Village and Phillips Square to deal with the issue of public safety around Chicago and Franklin. We held a big forum in the Lutheran Social Services building on Park Avenue, and we had about 40, 50 people from those neighborhood came. The inspector came, as well as Chief Rondo, who was then interim chief, and we discussed, we gave the community, we engendered, we gave the community the confidence, as well as the resource to decide, what do you want? What are your priorities? Do you need more police officers in Chicago and Franklin? Do you need cameras in Chicago and Franklin? What about PV Park? And how does that relay into Chicago and Franklin and the development of PP Park? We put a lot of money in PP Park, and the construction was started, but how do we activate the park to make sure that the park is not just lit and updated for drug dealers, but is lit and updated for our children and our families? Those are one of the things where you have community leading public safety efforts. But who knows public safety more than the people that live in these areas? And I think Rondo has been very helpful, but it is the privy of the next mayor of Minneapolis who the next police chief is, but we want to make sure that the police chief is one that is able to change the culture. The police should not be militarized, and they should be there to protect and serve our residents equally.
Great, thank you very much. Our next question has to do with LGBTQ communities, and this questioner would like to know where you stand on LGBTQ issues and what the city could do to better serve that population. You're first again.
I mean, I think that's a great question. LGBT community, just like any other minority community, has to be protected. Over the last four years, I have been on the council, there have been two major ordinances and resolutions that I personally won author, and it came about because of what happened in Gary, Indiana, when you had a baker that refused to serve a gay couple. And I watched it on the news, I think it was MSNBC, and it kind of, in my mind, kindled a couple of questions. What happened if a baker in Minneapolis did that? What if that baker wasn't immigrant baker? What if he was an East African baker or a Latino baker? Are they aware of the laws that we have in the city of Minneapolis? And I called over Velma Corbell, who is the Civil Rights Department Chief, Commissioner at the city of Minneapolis, and I made the resolution that was basically the public accommodation anti-discrimination law, to educate the immigrant communities, as well as the non-immigrant communities, about the laws that we have, and to strengthen our anti-discrimination laws when it comes to sex, gender, you know, race, disability. And I think I'm very proud of that. The second thing that I also worked on was the Transgender Equity Council that Elizabeth Glitter led on, but I was also an author of that, to make sure that our transgender neighbors and friends get the protection that we have. So I think those are two things, you know, where is the beef? This is not rhetoric. These are actual ordinances that I worked on since I've been on the council. One of them that I led on, that right now has been put in practice, to make sure that we do not discriminate, that we reduce discrimination in the city. And where does that come from? That comes from my whole life experience of being discriminated against, you know? Having bias when I was in school, when I was a child, having a different name, you know? My name is Abdul Kadir, people couldn't pronounce it, so I changed it to Abdi, because it sounded like Andy. You know? It's the reality of my own life, and how would I allow someone to discriminate against my neighbors?
Thank you. Mr. Norr.
I've been changing my name to Andy, so... Anyway, so the issue of LGBTQ community, you know, when those divisive proposals for the marriage amendment and the quota ID came, I was on the upfront fighting for justice and equality. I know many people have attacked me on that, because I do believe that we need to protect each and every community, especially the LGBTQ community that lives in Ward Six. Many people have asked me, are you going to represent us? That's a question that really bothers me, because they're all residents of Ward Six. That's why I was endorsed by Outfront, previously had the support from the Stonewall DFL. I've worked with them to address many issues, I've collaborated with them to make sure that we do have a coalition that can come together, that we can build bridges together and fight for justice and equality, and making sure that we address the housing discrimination that impacts the LGBTQ community, making sure that the business that we, you know, minority and small and other businesses, that people are being excluded for them to be included as part of a subgroup that can take advantage of those businesses where a particular... You know, there are many things that we can all come together, but when we leave anyone behind, then we've left everyone behind. I'm going to be a champion for every resident, including LGBTQ, the young black males who are struggling, the women, the men, the children, who really are looking for a better leader who can represent them. So you can count on me from day one to become that inclusive leader who addresses the challenges of each and every community in Ward Six.
All right, thank you. Our next question comes from the audience today, and it's back about the police department. And we'll go to you, Mr. Norr. Do you favor requiring police officers to self-insure?
It's a good question. This issue was brought before the city council, and it was voted down by some of the city council members. Quite frankly, if it's the only solution we have in addressing the police brutality, we're already paying millions of dollars that we can save and put it somewhere more productive. If it's going to change the police culture, yes, we need to institute self-insurance for the police officers. If it's going to fix the issues of building trust and relationship with the police, yes, we need self-insurance. But we have to look deep and understand where the challenges are. We have to be able to sit down with the residents and inform them how we can really bring that policy. If we don't talk to one another, if we don't know where the problems are, if we don't know how much we're spending, millions of dollars each year the city spends in terms of paying for actions of the police officers, this puts them to be more responsible, to be more accountable for their actions. And yes, I'm in favor if it's going to fix the police culture in our city.
Councilmember Worsami?
You know, that's a very good question. I don't think it's an answer to the issues of police that we have now. The issue between the police and the community is a breakdown of relationship. It's not about insurance, it's not about self-insurance or otherwise. It is an issue of the relationship between the police and how police see people of color and how people of color see the police. And this could be something that has come from slavery, Jim Crow, to the culture of the police having impunity. You know, I can talk about, you know, self-insurance, but I would like to address one issue, which is, over the time that I've been on the council, we have worked proactively to bring the community here in Ward Six, a large African community, and the police together. That's why, even at the time of Black Lives Matter, and you had a lot of the issues that came about nationally and in the city, you never had a single riot in Ward Six. You never had a single incident where the East African community elders, leaders came out and said the police treated us, mistreated us. Why? Because I was proactive. I brought the police and the community together. We made sure that we built bridges, we made sure that we brought people together. And right now, the relationship between the police and the East African community is at an all-time high, and that's because of the action that we did. We didn't wait for an incident to happen. We made sure that our inspectors understood the culture of this community. We made sure the community understood the expectations that they had with regards to the police. So I think there is a long way, we need to go a long way to address the police and issues of relationship to communities. But in Ward Six, we are in good hands. Over the last four years, we've done well. We can do better, and we'll continue to move in that direction of bringing our police up. These are our police officers. We need to make sure that the police are not militarized, and they are part of the community, that they are seen as servants to the community, that they are seen as people who protect the community. And right now, with the East African community, a lot of young people want to join the police, and I'm very proud of them.
All right, thank you very much. There's been a lot of talk about bike lanes lately. The Minneapolis newspaper, the Star Tribune did a story on, I think that's Sunday, about bike lanes. So, does the city have enough bike lanes, or do we have too many bike lanes?
I think we need more bike lanes. As somebody who doesn't drive a car, and who is very fortunate to live in a neighborhood that I can get on the green line and the blue line, as somebody who, you know, walks to work when the weather's wonderful, and takes a train when the weather's like this, I think, you know, we need more, we need more options when it comes to public transportation. And having bike lanes is a good thing in the city of Minneapolis, just like having parks is a good thing in the city of Minneapolis. And I'm supportive of bike lanes, and I've always been a supporter of bike lanes, and I've been one person who worked on moving away from the emphasis of the motor vehicle. You know, again, I go back to my upbringing. I grew up in a place where I could take the tube and a bus, and I could walk anywhere I wanted to walk. I want that for the city of Minneapolis and people of Minneapolis, just like I'm fortunate to have two train stations in Cedar Riverside, I want everybody to have at least two train stations in their neighborhood. But we do need bikes, and we need people to be given options, right? So, we need more bike lanes, I mean, I would say, but we need to be very careful when we put the bike lanes. I think that's where you have a lot of disagreement with the community and advocates. You know, maybe sometimes we can't have bike lanes on major thoroughbys, but we do need more bike lanes, and I think that you have more public transportation options is very important for the city of Minneapolis. Go ahead, Ford.
Yes. Well, the question is, do we need more bike lanes? Yes, but then let's look at the reality. The vehicles that are, you know, not sharing the road with so many bike lanes, just like I described earlier on, a cyclist was hit by a car and left, you know, it was a hit-and-run. We need to make sure that those bike lanes are safe, and most of the cyclists, some of them may be, you know, including the new building on Snellin. I've seen some of the residents who are saying that they need to calm down also, not only the vehicles, but also the bikes that are coming down the hill. There are so many people crossing, so we need to enforce a process whereby we're protecting the bike lanes that we have, and making sure that the streets are safe for the pedestrians at the same time, and making sure that we calm down the vehicles which are going through Franklin Avenue. Sometimes I feel it's difficult for me and my kids to take the bikes on those streets, because I fear for the vehicles coming to hit them, especially those who are not paying attention. People are texting and driving and doing so many things. We need to start indicating everybody, this is more about education about the residents of the city of Minneapolis, that they need to be more informed, what's the purpose of the bike lane, how to make sure that they can share the streets, how to ensure pedestrian safety, how to make sure that we respect one another when we're on the streets. And those are things that I think we can do together. As your next city council member, I'll show... As your next city council member, I'll show by example, by leading the group, by talking to the neighborhoods, by making sure that the message and the education about bike lanes and how to make sure that people understand how to use them at the same time, protecting the young people who and encouraging them. In fact, three weeks ago, more than thirty students who go to this school, I was the lead person bringing them from Cedar Riverside to this school and I'll encourage you to help them also, you know, many students to take bikes.
All right, thank you very much. Our next question has to do with the budget taxes. The 2017 city budget was $1.5 billion, which was an eight percent jump from the previous year. The 2017 budget included a 5.5% property tax increase. So the question is, are current taxes too high, too low, or just about right?
I think our current taxes are too high. We have to figure out where does our budget go? You know, more than twenty-two percent goes to the police, I believe, department, but we have to figure out how to have a balanced budget. We need to protect the services that are really critical to the residents and making sure that we can exist, you know, when we're talking about bike lanes and all those things, it will cost money. And making sure that we have beautiful parks and many things, it will cost money. But because of that commingling of services, I think we have to look beyond that. The school board will increase the tax, the, you know, the city will increase your taxes. How can we all work together? How can we bring the park board, the schools, the city to have a vision of making sure that your taxes are used in the right way? How can we make sure that it's not only going to the private developers and all those special interests? We need to cut them out. See, the resources, you have to follow where the money goes. And if we do that, we can cut a lot of spending that should have been given to those who need the most and that reduces the tax burden on everybody and make sure that we can keep our homes and pay for our mortgages so that our own children can inherit from us rather than being pushed out. Those are things I think we can all work together and for sure, for sure, we have to have a balanced budget that reflects the needs at the same time, making sure that we cut those waste that are going to special interest groups.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's wonderful to hear that my opponent is fiscally responsible progressive, but in terms of the budget, I think the balance is right. And the reason why we've increased the levy is because we had an eight-hundred-million, you know, landmark deal to fix all our streets and our parks. And if we want to invest in public service, we do have to pay a price for it. I mean, and I'll be honest, in terms of, and I'm very proud of the landmark agreement that we signed, because what does a city do? There's a lot of things people talk about now. The city is not a welfare state, it's not a welfare unit. The city takes care of the streets, the parks, and public safety. And over the last four years, you know, last year, we had a landmark agreement, because every time I talk to my constituents, one of the things they talk about is public safety and the potholes and, you know, the snow and making sure that our parks are safe. And last year, we had an agreement to have eight-hundred million dollars over the next twenty years to fix all our streets and all our parks. And what I did was, I put an equity matrix into that to say that the parks that are most used, that are in areas of concentrated poverty, should get the priority and not just the parks which are the richest in the city of Minneapolis. And lo and behold, what the parks that came to the top, PV Park, Curry Park, Matthews Park. And this is what the city does. So when you're designing a budget, you have to design it in a way that reflects the values of your constituents. And what our constituents are telling us is, we need safer streets, safer bike lanes, but we also need to keep our park system the best in the country because that's what we pride ourselves on. So yes, right now, the budget, the levy has gone up, but it has gone up because of what our constituents were telling us, which is, we need to invest in public infrastructure. I agree, where there should be cuts, there should be cuts. Where we need to have private-public partnership, there should be, just like we did with the opportunity center. But when it comes to the fundamental core of what the city of Minneapolis is and what the infrastructure that we need, we do need to invest in that, otherwise we'll end up like other cities. And that's why we have such a large budget, because our city is thriving because we invest in infrastructure and we invest in our parks.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Our next question is along similar lines. If times got tough, what city of Minneapolis department or budget item would you cut?
Maybe the coordinator's office and some of the mayoral powers I would cut, you know? I'll get rid of some of those communications and stuff like that, but I would not cut public safety. I would not cut public safety. And every time I go and I speak to my constituents, in every ward, in every, even outside my ward, people talk about public safety. The calls that we get, the most calls that we get is about loitering, is about drug dealing, is about I don't feel safe in my neighborhood, is about the lighting in my neighborhood. So yes, we will cut, you know, the times are tough, there are things that we can cut. But public safety, the fire, the police are not things that I am willing to cut because I never heard from any constituent telling me, our streets are too safe. So that's one of the areas that we will make sure that we look into is, yes, there are areas we can cut, there are flexibilities that we have, but we need to make sure that, you know, the fundamentals that we do in the city of Minneapolis, clearing our streets, making sure that people are safe, making sure that constituents can sleep well at night, I think that's one of the most important things and I'm not gonna compromise in those.
As a city, I think you have to think outside the box. Cutting budget comes with responsibility. If we look at, are we ready to, you know, survive with less? I'll give you an example. Minneapolis Public Schools is going to be laying off some teachers. The classrooms will keep on growing. Our education level right now is down because we haven't changed how we're teaching our kids. Our city is done at that level. These are the core basic services that we're asking. Make sure that we have enough police officers, that we change also, instead of just using the police officers, we can use the neighborhood organizations to become the first people who are going to be addressing the safety concerns of the neighborhood. Let's increase the neighborhood watch groups, the neighborhood so that people know one another, reduces the investment that we're putting into direct services. Let's encourage the citizens of the city to take part in that process. That collectiveness reduces the burden of, you know, asking the residents to pay more. We can do more prevention, if we can support our youth, if we can increase our education, if we also bring jobs back to Minneapolis, so there's a good buildings that we can bring people back in, that increases the revenue, that increases the services. If we invest in small businesses, we're going to increase resources that are going to come to the city. People are driving two hours outside of the city, one hour outside the city just to go find a job. We can form that partnership with private entities, with the schools, with the park board, so that we can reduce the over expenditure and also duplicate services that we are seeing from various agencies. And yes, we have to fight for more LGA. I see our state representative, Ilhan Omar here. We've seen lots of cuts coming from the state and the federal government. So we have to be more cognizant of that challenge that exists. In this new era of Trump, we have to be more smart in how we balance our budget.
All right, thank you very much. Our next question comes from the audience. At the end of your term, if you're elected, what three things will you have achieved?
At the end of my term, number one, I wanna focus on the residents. I wanna listen to you, I'll make sure that we can co-government together. That's number one promise that I've made from the beginning. The second part is, I'm gonna fight for more affordable housing that gives people that opportunity that they live in a safe neighborhood, that they live in a place where they call home. Number three, public safety. I've seen it, I've seen the challenges of young people who are derailed, we have seen so many challenges in around all the neighborhoods. So I've seen the challenges of public safety firsthand. I've been to the courts, to the drug courts, to the housing courts and so many other places. So what I'm promising you that I'm going to invest more resources into public safety, neighborhood organizations, and I'll make sure that I keep my promises. When I come back, you will hold me accountable to those issues that I promised to do.
Councilmember Worsami?
Repeat the question.
Yeah, so the question is, if you're re-elected, what are the three things that you would hope to achieve in your next term?
The three things that I wanna achieve in my next term is, one, environmental justice. There's too much litter in our ward, not enough trash cans, not enough education about cleaning up the ward, and this is something that came just from listening to our constituents over the last four years, making sure that we educate our large immigrant population about the importance of recycling, about the importance of cleaning trash and giving them resources and programs, stipends for the seniors, stipends for the young people to clean up. So environmental justice, especially cleaning up our ward, is number one priority because when, you know, your ward is beautiful and the streets look like old Milwaukee Avenue, then everybody will be, you know, very happy and pleasant. So that's one. The second one is bringing mixed income housing and market rate housing to our ward. We have a lot of affordable housing, but we need to bring in mixed income housing in terms of market rate housing, so we mix up the ward, you know, we create a balance that we don't have a concentration of poverty in the ward. I think that's very important as well and that's very important for all our residents that live in our ward. And then also building infrastructure for the most vulnerable members of our community. So building a cooperative mall in Seward, bringing artists and, you know, when I talk about this cooperative mall idea that I have, basically I tell people, I wanna bring Afriktown, like Chinatown, right? Chinatown is beautiful, you come and you see Chinese culture, but a lot of people that go to Chinatown are not Chinese. So all we want is to have Afriktown here, a lot of people that can come there are not necessarily African, they can eat Oromo food, Somali cuisine, get that nice scarf, you know, get a Persian rug, you know, all of those things. We wanna attract the best of Minneapolis and our immigrant community is one of the best of Minneapolis. So those are the three things that I wanna do in my next four years, if you give me the opportunity.
All right, thank you very much. And we have a new candidate just joining us, so we'll let her introduce herself and do a two-minute introduction.
Thank you, I am very sorry to be late. My name is Fuduma Yusuf and I'm running for Minneapolis.
Could you speak louder?
All right. Thank you very much for being here, I'm very sorry to be late. My name is Fuduma Yusuf and I'm running for Minneapolis Ward Six City Council and I'm a mother of five and I, the reason I'm running because I know the need of the communities and the residents of Ward Six.
And have you answered the same question the other candidates answered, which is, if you're elected, what are the three things you'd like to accomplish during your term?
Number one is the safety, road signs and speed bumps and a closing sign. And number two is...
You want to do it here? You please now.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Oh, okay. I said number one is the safety, which is the speed bump, speed limit and also the closing sign. Number two is youth employment. Number three is empowering for women to be a business.
All right, very good, thank you. So we've talked about several things, including the police, LGBTQ issues, the budget, housing. Let's talk about why you like living in the sixth ward and what's the one thing that you can do in the city council to make the sixth ward better? And we'll go ahead and start with you since you're new here.
Well, starting with...
What is the question?
The question is, do you like living in this ward?
Yes, yes, I certainly love living in this. And when I first came to the United States, I started my life at Cedar Riverside where I live right now. And after eight years, I came back and the reason being is like that area is a diversity area and it's, actually, it's close to the downtown Minneapolis. And it's a beautiful place to live and we wanted to improve. The reason I'm running for my mother and I do understand the need of everybody when it comes to mothers and grandpa and grandma and youths and everybody that lives. So I wanted to help those peoples and I wanna work for them.
All right, Mr. Nor.
Well, when I arrived here, on my second day, I was at the Brian Cole Community Center, which is in Cedar Riverside. I started helping many people who needed help. I fell in love with the neighborhood, you know, starting with going to Seward and many places within, you know, the ward, especially in Cedar Riverside. I found my beautiful wife in that same neighborhood, you know, she lived around there, so that kept me staying in this neighborhood. So from the beginning, I've always been someone who has been more devoted into this neighborhood. We've lived for a few years across the street of Cedar Ninety-Fourth. Right now, I live in the new 515 on the park for almost two years now. The beauty about this neighborhood is more diverse. We come from different backgrounds, but we also see people who look like us so we can give them the support that they need. I've been a public servant for more than eighteen years, but when I see that I can help and give back, no matter what time of the day it is, that has made me anchor myself into this neighborhood so that I can make sure that those who are most vulnerable, those who are looking for help and those young people who are out on the streets, just within the last few months this year, we've helped thousands, two hundred and two thousand five hundred young people to find jobs. That's my passion. I'm working with each and every neighborhood, trying to listen to, working with the schools. I've been in this school for many times, even three weeks ago. Just this morning, I visited two classrooms to talk about civic engagements. That's my passion. I wanna engage the public in different ways and become that bridge that brings people together from different groups. I've done that, I wanna continue living in this neighborhood and to become your next city council member because I value what you bring to the table. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Worsami, repeat the question one more time. So the question had to do with, do you like living in the sixth ward? What do you like about it?
That's a very, it's a tough question to ask. You know, I had no choice in moving to London, but that was my mother's choice. I was a child, I was taken out of where my country's own and I was thrown into a big city, but I had every choice to move to Minneapolis. I immigrated by choice to move here and I had every choice to settle here. I'm a homeowner in Ward Six, all my four kids were born in Ward Six. I choose to live here because it's the best park of the city of Minneapolis and not because it has a large East African community, but it has nice theaters, it has Milwaukee Avenue, you have Franklin, you're close to downtown. It's a beautiful, it's a very strategic place to live, you know, when you look at it. And I don't wanna dwell on, we have challenges in Ward Six, but I see a lot of potential. Yes, there are poor young immigrant kids, but I was a poor young immigrant kid raised by a single mother. What I see, when I see the young East African men, is the future of the city of Minneapolis. That's why we build the Opportunity Center in the heart of Cedar Riverside. Why? Because I see opportunity, I see potential, I don't wanna dwell on, you know, they are poor, but they don't have to be poor. Yes, there are challenges, but we can overcome the challenges and I think that's what I present. I was a child refugee, but you gave me the honor of being the first Muslim council member in the city of Minneapolis. And over time, and you can even read today's editorial on the Star Tribune, it is not just political will, it is political skill that you need at City Hall. At City Hall, you need somebody who can fight tooth and nail on the budget to bring resources to this community. So I don't dwell on inequality, I know inequality. What I dwell on is bringing resources to reduce the inequality, making sure that I bring resources to my ward and to change it. And that's why I live here, I'm settled here, I'm anchored here, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not a renter, I live in Ward Six and I am a homeowner in Ward Six and I will fight for Ward Six as I have over the last four years.
All right, thank you very much. Our next question has to do with the mayoral race and we'll begin with you, Councilmember Worsami. Which of the potential mayoral candidates do you feel you'd best be able to work with if you're re-elected?
That's easy, that's Jacob Frye. And the reason why I say that is because Jacob and me started together as two young council members and we didn't know much and we learned together. And I saw his passion for the city of Minneapolis. He runs a lot, I see him on CNN right now, but Jacob, you know, for me, it's that personal relation that I had. When I wanted to bring resources, when I wanted to bring the Opportunity Center, he was there. When I wanted to bring money to the towers, he was there. And everybody has his choice, but my choice, number one, is Jacob. You know, I liked Ray Dean, I like Nikima, I like Hope, you know, I think those are the candidates that... with him very closely, and I see the passion that he has for the city of Minneapolis. You know, he's like Frank Sinatra, you know, he's going to bring a lot of attraction to the city, and I like that. But I also like the hard work that he does. You know, I like how diligent he is, and that rapport that we have, I think he would be the best council member, I mean, the best, sorry, the best mayor to help me bring resources and attention to my ward. That's, I think, that's the reason why I chose him, because I think we can work together better.
All right, Mr. Nor. The mayor's race?
Well, I think the mayor, Betsy Hodge, has got a good potential to lead us. At the same time, I also believe Ray Dean, who is also a state legislator, can also have that potential. If you look at my lip piece, I have Betsy Hodge on the front, on the backside, you have Ray Dean. It's because I do believe that building partnership is what will make a difference for Ward Six. Ray Dean represents a segment of Ward Six. Ilhan Omar represents a significant portion of Ward Six. I have her support, a full endorsement. And also Karen Clark, who represents the other section of Ward Six. It's because they value my partnership, that building bridge, so that they can become our advocates at the state level, and I can become the advocate of the city law. So what I believe, the city, the future of the city, the most powerful position is to be a city council. We have a weak mayoral system. If we empower progressive leadership in the city of Minneapolis, we can together make a difference. And that's what I value. You have got a difficult choice to make in this election. But what I'm asking you is, look who will bring the progressive values based on record, based on what you have seen, based on the relationships that we're building, because that's what will make a difference for all of us. So I'm asking you to make the right choice when you're going to be voting for the mayoral race. You've got three choices, and make sure you use the three choices, because this year, it's going to make a difference of who you choose to be your next elect. You need to write them, one, two, three. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. What's your say?
I don't have anybody that I could say their name as, you know, mayor, but I am just, yeah. Say, I don't have anybody that I can say their names as a mayor, but I'm open, whoever wins, I am ready to work with if I've been elected as a city council.
All right, thank you very much. This next question also comes from the audience, and we'll go to you first, Ms. Yusuf. What are the two most important policies or issues with which you disagree with one or the other candidates? So the question is, what are the two most important policies or issues with which you disagree with the other candidates?
If we, if I start on my left hand side, with Mahmoud Nor, we know that Mahmoud Nor, he has been run a couple of times. And nothing's wrong with that, but I think it would be good to give a chance for other peoples who haven't had a chance. So I, I believe Mahmoud, he's, he claimed that he actually make an employee for many different youth, and that because he's, he works nonprofit organization, and I don't think that it's accurate information. And he's getting paid whatever he's, so I shouldn't agree that Mahmoud's saying that he find a job for many youths, because he's getting grants for the government. And he shouldn't be claiming that, because that's part of his job, it's not what he does personally. On the other hand, Abdi, Ms. Worsami, he has done some jobs, but he also have some other things that he hasn't done it. And in my understanding is, because of this malls and subway issues, all that about it, Worsami's seeking for reelection, but he's not actually that. You know, it's not, it's not effective information that what I'm saying, so I don't agree with both of them.
All right, Councilmember Worsami?
I mean, in terms of policy, I think, you know, my sister here is a Republican, I don't agree with the Republicans. And with Mahmoud, you know, I mean, I haven't seen a lot of, a lot of, you know, he hasn't laid out a lot of different policies that I, that I have to look at, to disagree with. But I think the difference, if we're looking, if we're asking the difference, we're all Somalis, we're all actually cousins, you know, we all live in the same neighborhood, so I think we agree on many things. But I think the main difference here is, is about experience. It's about making sure that the last four years, it was very hard, it was tough, making sure that you manage expectations of a large and growing community. That's why I got a lot of gray hair. You know, I never had a single gray hair when I was coming to office, but I want to build on that experience. And I think the next four years, there will be less learning and more doing. And just like I said before, it's not about just talking about the inequality, talking about that we are poor, talking about that we have problems, talking about, it's about doing things. Over the last four years, I've done things. Fifteen-dollar minimum wage, safe and sick time, the parks, the streets, affordable housing, everything that my constituents have asked me to do. And yes, I spent many hours stuck in City Hall, negotiating, cajoling, trying to get resources, fighting for my, for my issues for Ward Six on the budget. And it has been monumental, and I think that's the difference, the difference is experience. We agree on the world viewpoint, we have different options, but the main difference in this election is, yes, who will you send to Ward Six to sit City Hall, to fight for Ward Six? And I think I am the best candidate for that, because I have proven track record, and I think we will do a lot more in the second term.
All right, Mr. Nor.
You know, the importance of having a leader is someone who's going to listen to. One of the things that I think we're different is someone who's going to come to your neighborhood organizations. Having that listening session about the issues that we all face together, that's something that is different and unique. You have to have the value of what are you going to change when you come to the neighborhood organization, you inform them, you co-govern with them. That is really important, and it's a huge difference that I bring to the table. The second piece, you're looking for a progressive leader who believes in police accountability, who is going to work with the residents and make sure that the police are held accountable. We don't want to ignore about the Black Lives Matter. You know, I do believe that we need to build equity in the system. Those are the key differences, the two, if you have asked for two, that you can look into on the record of Councilmember Worsami, on what I'm promising you, because I'm not the incumbent. If those things are, you know, what makes us a different, progressive leader who believes in progressive values, who's going to work with you as a resident, rather than me coming with solutions, because we can make a difference together, we can have a prosperous Ward Six if we believe in, and that belief comes from you.
All right, well, we have about three minutes left before three o'clock, and we've promised to stay on time. So if everybody's okay with it, I'd like to turn to all the candidates for a one-minute summary of why we should vote for you. Mr. Nor.
It has been a wonderful time to, you know, sit here and to talk about the issues. I'm someone who believes that collaborate, working on our common issues. We've seen our city neglecting some of the issues that I've talked about, from homeless individuals, from our youth struggling, from our education. I want to become that leader who can build those bridges. I want to become that leader who's going to listen to you, who will take your voice and amplify at the City Hall, who's going to collaborate and work in partnership with the elected officials, the state representatives in this ward. That's what I value, and that's what I believe in. If you give me this opportunity, I promise that when I come back, we're going to be celebrating about the accomplishment that we've done in the last four years, and not putting a question mark. That's what I'm asking for you. Please vote for me on November seventh. Thank you so much.
Ms. Yusuf.
Thank you for all of you being here today and listening to us. I, I'm asking you both, the reason being why I'm a mother, and I know the need of everybody, as I said, and I want is to break, there's a gap between our communities when it comes like immigrants and Muslim communities and other American societies. There's a gap between, it's like not having an understanding to each other, and I want to break that gap, and I want to bring all the neighborhood together and make it all Ward Six residents in one. So I'm asking you, who you vote in November seventh? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Councilmember Worsami?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about the things that we have done, and also what the things that we will be doing in the future. You know, over the last four years, we have made great accomplishments in Ward Six. You know, I have pushed for fifteen-dollar minimum wage, we got that done, safe and sick time, affordable housing, we put a lot of money, fifty million dollars, in this neighborhood, the parks, the streets. But the main thing is that I have learned, what is it? What does it take to run a city? What is it, what is the role of a council? And if you elect me again, one more time, I'll be running off. I'm not going to be learning, I'm not going to be questioning. I know exactly every department, everywhere, and also I know by all the thousand door knocks that we've had, we know the issues that are important to you. So give me the opportunity, I would love to have your vote. I have every single endorsement from every single union, but the most important endorsement is yours on November seventh, and I would love to have that endorsement. So please give me one more chance to build on the success that we have over the last four years. Thank you very much.
All right, we'd like to thank all the candidates for joining us today.